We will resume our meeting since we recessed after our meeting with the select board. It is seven thirty on July eighteen, two thousand sixteen, and this is the open meeting session, uh, portion of our school committee meeting. Uh, we will start with our minutes. Uh, June twentieth, two thousand sixteen. Today, we're going to get a chance to look at the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay. Any edits or discussions on June twenty minutes? Okay. All in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, June twenty-seven, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion or edit? Okay. All in favor to approve, please say aye.
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 Obstand.
Right.
Okay. Visitors' comments? Did anybody sign in to comment?
It's on the machine. It's right on the counter desk there.
I missed the sign-in.
Alright. Uh, you only need to sign in really if you're gonna comment.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, you're more than welcome to put your name in there. Okay. So hearing none, we continue, uh, to new business.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity first to introduce Nancy Jenks as our new nurse leader for the gravity public schools.
Welcome aboard.
And she's getting right to task, so she has some information for us and some things that we need to think about.
So the Department of Public Health requires that once an old school nurse leader steps down, that we reapply for our medication delegation and EpiPen delegation to school staff on field trips and other events where school nurses may not be readily available. The staff get trained twice a year. Um, and we obviously have procedures in place to enact that, but because Karen Slazak Boach has stepped down, we have to reapply. So I just attended a training on Thursday, um, to, um, reorient myself with the DPH guidelines. Um, but now I also need Superintendent Stan- Stanson's signature, as well as the chair of the school committee to sign on our application so we can submit it, so we'll be ready for the first day of school. Um, the school physician has already signed it, I have already signed it. Um, so we have, um, two applications. One is for the medication delegation, which the staff will be giving the meds, um, as, um, scheduled with the physician's order under the guidance of a school nurse, and then the epinephrine in the event that students with diagnosed life-threatening allergies needed on a field trip or any other place where a nurse will not be readily available. So I have those with me.
So it kind of, it revalidates what exists under this, uh, the new, uh, nurse leader? Is that what it is?
Yes. It already fits into our policies. It's just we have to reapply now. Um, and it's, we are, reapply every two years, but because Karen has stepped down, we have to reapply because I'm now taking over.
Is there a cost to that?
No, it's free. If we were, um, doing full delegation, it would be three hundred dollars, but, um, we're doing section two and three, so that's free for all.
Good. Thank you.
Finding something free.
Yeah, we can afford that.
Welcome to the district.
Thank you.
Alright, so. Sign here.
Nancy, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
You said, um, the training for the EpiPen would be twice a year?
Yes.
Previously, we've only ever done it once. That's why I'm asking.
By law, it's, um, it's supposed to be twice a year, so if you did it in the spring and the fall, that counts as one year. But it has to be one calendar year, you have to be trained twice a year. That's the law. So, um, we'll make sure that that is happening. Because again, too, if you're not using the skills, you're gonna forget to use them, so we want to make sure that we are reinforcing. Yes, if it's medication, it's something that's really important, we don't want anything to happen for students. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I thought you were gonna talk about heat advisory here.
Oh, come on, it's not that bad.
No? Okay. Is that, is it all?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, and welcome aboard again. Um, we're going to old business now.
Sure. Uh, I have included in your, uh, folders, your electronic folders, the MOA for the after-school program, uh, and Jen Silva is here to, uh, answer any questions that you might have regarding this year's program, uh, and our goals and objectives moving forward for next year. Thank you for coming, Jen. Now, you had given the superintendent authority to sign the contracts, but I did want you to have the opportunity to ask any questions that you had, or...
Honestly, the only thing that I had in mind, because I know that we already had a program with the collaborative last semester.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, whether or not we're gonna extend it to a year agreement now or later, it's already a year, so we're, we're good. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay. So, um... Is there an intent to expand or add different things depending on changes in interest, or...
There is.
Okay.
Um, we are limited right now due to enrollment. Last session being the pilot session, we ended up having twenty-one kids total by the end of the session. So far, I have thirteen pre-registered that have already paid their registration fees, um, and within the first two weeks of school, we're anticipating. My goal is to offer two different classes each day, and the, the, this program will run in, um, six-week sessions. That basically follow the school calendar with the vacation breaks and things like that. And the first, the first session will be preset, simply so that we can gauge the interest of the children, and then the following sessions, we will be, we'll base it based on what they're looking for. We will be working on the ELA and math standards. So anything that we do will have some ELA or math component to it, because that is part of our agreement with the school, because that is what we need. Um, it's just a matter of what. Some of the ideas that we have in place right now, we do have, um, some returning. Our drama teacher is returning, as is our yoga instructor. Both of those classes were well-attended last session. We are also looking to bring in, um, a coding class, so kids learn how to code. Um, there'll be an architecture, 3D architecture, where they actually build a town, and that works with manipulatives and shapes. They have to cut out their shapes, design their shapes, and create. Um, we're looking to add a second drama class that, um, is more in line with what the teachers are working on, so we basically can take required reading and bring it to life for the students. And then my hope is to get some sort of a nutrition culinary type of food, because our kids just don't have proper eating habits.
Yeah.
And if they, if they make it, they're more apt to eat it.
Well, I mean, I think we're volunteering to test, right?
Yeah.
No time should we get there.
Well, let's see. Class ends like four-thirty, homework starts at four forty-five, so...
Alright. Cool.
Have it in the policy cell committee.
And I don't have to mix.
Jen, were those, were those numbers for West Street and East Meadow?
The twenty-one was just for East, was just for West Street last year. Um, they had five or six, I believe, at East Meadow.
Mm-hmm.
The majority of this session is still from West Street. However, I cannot tell you if there are any enrollments sitting at East Meadow, because I'm not gonna lie, I've been crazy busy and I haven't made it over there. Um, to see if there's anything. The registrations did have my home address to send to, but I've still been receiving them through West Street, so apparently they're somehow getting to West Street, and I try to go in at least every two weeks to check the box.
Anything else? Quick, thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, so be knee-ask report. Per your request, I included the full report, um, in your folder, plus the response from Principal Cavalo, um, which he wanted for review, so, um, we will have the full discussion in August.
Sounds good.
But it's there for you for review.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, you mean I prepared myself for tonight?
Ah, I'm sorry.
Then you'll have to do it for next month, eh?
Yeah, it's true. Oh, my memory.
We'll have more questions next month.
Yes.
Is that, um... Those documents that were available to us, either, um, uh, will, will they be available to the public on our website as well, or is it already?
It already is.
Yes.
It already is?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't...
I believe all of them.
Jonathan told us that at the last meeting, because you just hadn't gotten them.
Okay.
Yes. No, but it's there.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, August meeting?
August meeting.
And when is that meeting?
In August.
I believe it's the eighteenth.
Okay.
What is it, Kathy?
I think it's the eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
And that, is that six-thirty, too? Are we at six-thirty now, or...
We are.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the day before my birthday.
Eighteenth is a Thursday.
August eighteenth is a Thursday, so...
It's a Thursday.
August fifteenth, maybe?
Maybe the fifteenth.
Okay.
Fifteen, fifteenth is the sound.
Is it?
Please, somebody.
Fifteenth is a Monday.
The fifteenth.
So we're sure it's the fifteenth. Thank you.
Six-thirty, yeah?
Six-thirty, yes. Okay.
Okay. So we have Chartwells here, they're going to review the results of the student survey, I believe. Uh, get some information.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Andrew, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thanks?
Good. I'd like to thank John, we were able to, after our last school committee meeting, we were able to do a quick survey with the students, um, and most of them responded to the survey, um, trying to get a feel of what we could do, as you brought up before, in bridging the gap, uh, to break even. So spoke to John, returned to kitchen, then we did the survey, um, on items they most preferred versus items that weren't as preferable, um, menu items, um, the salads, the cold sandwiches have been on the decline, um, some of the other things, the main, uh, things that they did like were hot grilled sandwiches and our, um, what we call our create station, which is our meal of the day, um, Asian, Mexican, and a bunch of variety things that change every day. Those were their most popular, and so trying to bridge the gap, um, I have a couple proposals as far as, um, I mean, it was a quick survey, um, just asking what they liked, didn't like, um, so we could restructure our labor, hopefully get back to a, a break even. And doing that, looking at the staff we do have here at the high school, the other two schools, they just have two people, we don't really have anywhere to cut. So I'm proposing possibly cutting, uh, for our position, um, and we would reduce or eliminate, um, the salads that are made at the high school to go over to the elementary schools. We can try to work those back in. We'd also reduce some of the items available at the high school, called the ones that weren't as popular, and also, um, alternate between our panini station and our pizza station. That way, we wouldn't miss the for our position. This would roughly, or an estimate, with, um, labor-infringed costs drop, um, or of about eight thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. And again, depending on what we'd like to do, is do a more formal survey, maybe at the end of September, something online, something we can set up either in the classrooms or at home, students and parents, and judge where their preferences are going, so we can adjust during the school year and capture revenue that way. We'd also like to, uh, work with John on setting up maybe a monthly meeting with students, um, either the student government or another small group of students to get feedback from students immediately. Uh, one of the other items, as far as increasing à la carte sales and covering our costs, is the idea of a snack cart, again, using, um, approved snacks. We would set up something after school, either in the cafeteria or outside of our office. Rose would be, um, with Man-Matt, uh, sports programs, after-school programs, instead of walking over to the store. It could have healthy snacks here. The labor wouldn't be too-too high, and that could be, if we went by, say fifteen percent of the average daily à la carte that we normally do at the high school, uh, and capture fifteen percent of that, roughly fifty dollars a day, that would increase our, our sales, revenue, or our profit margin by four thousand. Looked into, um, other ways to cut costs. Looked at the two breakfast programs at East Meadow and here at the junior senior high school. We eliminated a program like that. It wouldn't really, um, cut costs, uh, the services would be cut, but the, um, the amount of revenue, both in reimbursement and money coming in, would, would not make sense to cut those programs. They're, um, we do fairly well with both of them. We'd rather increase participation, both at the high school and the elementary school. High school program's great, because it's a mid-morning break, students come down to the cafeteria. Lot of times, before-school programs, they're set up and students aren't really hungry at that point, are, are in a rush and aren't arriving to school early to participate in breakfast programs, so this program does work well, and we'd like to keep that, along with the, the possible, um, lunch price increase, and these increases are, are decrease of eight thousand, seven hundred fifty, thousand for the for L position, and the four thousand dollars in the snack cart idea. We would hopefully be in a good position to break even at the end of next school year. Any questions that you have, or about the lunch price increase, or anything else?
Aye. Well, I'm just trying to, to you.
Again, this is my bugger. Did you, do you talk to elementary kids at all, and who's, what you're doing down there for lunch, or what's the participation rate? Because, again, as I said last time, they're, they're just as important part of our district as high school.
Absolutely.
And why is it the high school all the time? Why do you cater to them more? These kids have to eat, too, because I don't think, I hear the percentage rate is not very good, so, once, once you want to increase that percentage rate, which might be a revenue maker?
Yes, and we're always trying to do that at all the schools. These are, again, we can't cut labor at the other schools. Part of our, our, what we're, uh, planning on doing, cost and otherwise, we have a new model, uh, menu program, which I'm working on with our regional dietitian and regional chef, to bring in new menus for the fall. We have a program called Web Trition, where I'm also trying to make sure the cost of each meal does not go over what the income is. Those are our, uh, programs. We're hoping for the, uh, middle school, or sorry, East Meadow, we did do surveys during the school year, and we made adjustments, especially, uh, in the spring, we got feedback and on the menu, we actually put students, you know, student requested, myself, and, Chef Junior went over, we met with the students, got their, uh, feedback on some things, we brought back a baked potato bar and a couple other things that we highlighted on the menu. We've done similar things at West Street, and we're gonna try to do those early September to get them. I'm also gonna come up, I'm gonna come up with, issue a letter to kindergarten and first grade parents, so they're aware of the program, what we have to offer. We don't have as much, uh, space or labor to do a wider variety. There's more students here and more, uh, space in the kitchen, but we're hoping to improve and increase the participation at East Meadow and West Street. West Street is at fifty-nine percent, uh, participation rate, so fifty-nine percent of the students have lunch every day with us. East Meadow, sixty-one percent, um, this past year, uh, so those are fairly good numbers. They did dip slightly from the previous year, but we're hope, actually, West Street went up about two percent, so we're hoping, uh, the things I spoke of, we'll keep those and bring up the participation and, and cover our costs.
With the, uh, the cut back you mentioned here, which would affect salad, you said elementary, what, salad for staff salad?
Yeah, no, an alternate, uh, alternate salad, uh, lunch that's available every day, or have been currently available every day. We could probably, uh...
Were a lot of them buying that? So that...
It, it had dwindled down, so that's why we thought that, meaning out of the, uh, labor duties in the kitchen, that would be something, if we stopped that, it wouldn't affect participation too-too much, because it had, hadn't been a, a high seller. We are, I'm planning on doing salads, you know, a couple times a month as, as the main entree, so the staff in those two kitchens can produce those, and we won't need somebody at the high school to do it.
What's the, uh, what's the staff participation? What's the level of staff buying lunches in our cafeterias?
It's fairly good. I don't have that with, with my stuff. I can get that to you.
Just curious.
It's been fairly good. I know the principals have participated, um, there is a bigger, because there are more options here, more of the high school staff participate, uh, but we've had fairly good numbers. I mean, they're not off the charts, um, but there has been an increase over the last five years.
Maybe you surveyed the staff, too.
Yeah. At our last survey.
Everything will help if it's, if they wanna.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? Andrew, just, um, just to clarify that, the salad, elimination of salad, does it impact all three schools? Is that what it is?
Basically, yeah.
Okay. So what is, what's the program?
It's an entree salad.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's, um, you know, a vegetarian salad with either cheese or some type of chicken or something else on top. We would, depending on how the year's going, we might increase some of these hours to accommodate and bring that, but in order to reduce labor, we're gonna have to figure out what we can omit, uh, in our discussions. Last meeting, that I was here, um, you know, break even being the, the key point of the program going forward, and we're trying to juggle between participation and what we can do to get to the break even, and so that's, with, with the, um, even, yeah, with the participation rates at the elementary schools and how many students have been getting salads on a regular basis, it wasn't in decline, so I think we might even bring them back if finances are, are in better shape mid-year or in the spring. Uh, we'll, you know, juggle that and, and make changes, uh, depending on the student feedback.
Since you just mentioned, excuse me, finances, what was the final deficit this year? I thought I heard...
It's not finalized. We, we should be able to, uh, we're waiting for the Department of Education to approve the amendment to, um, uh, bring, or bring back or credit the school department on the, um, client investment, and if that goes through, we should be looking at nineteen thousand as a loss.
So at the, uh...
I thought you were thirty-nine.
Yeah, at the previous meeting, there was a thirty-nine thousand dollar that was mentioned. Did we know what that is?
I believe the difference is that the, um, town doesn't view inventory as, as an asset, if you will, where Chartwells does account for that, that product is being available.
Okay.
So, so did you check on that with them, before that? Ongoing issue?
That's ongoing issue.
It's either thirty-nine or nineteen. It's just one or the other. Can't be both. Well, if it's not good for us to have it one day, have it a different one.
And, and part of that thirty-nine is the change with the credit, and the credit of the management fee is about five thousand, five hundred dollars per year, that, uh, Chartwells will credit the school district because we did not reach a break even.
Well, I think what Jim's saying is, we just want to know what the real number is.
Right.
You know, we have the town saying one thing, have you guys saying something else? We don't know. We just want to know what the real number is.
And it seems like we already have a gap there, because if the town says, we do not recognize inventory as part of your asset, uh, then we're gonna have that, if it's something like twenty thousand dollars, and that's the, that's the kind of conversation we should have, because, you know, it's great to have those meetings, and I really appreciate it that we're all, uh, around the same table, but if we're looking at the same thing differently, regardless of, you know, how, uh, what the numbers are, at the end of the year, we're gonna have some gap. Uh, so we should actually do that. The other thing is, you mentioned that at the very least, we may have an eight thousand dollar reduction in cost, four thousand dollar additional revenue through the, the stand, so that already puts us ahead of your projected deficit for, for this coming year. One thing that I, at least personally, I would like to make sure is that, going forward, we take that deficit, work it into the budget, and it will, it, it becomes part of our, uh, annual, uh, school lunch budget. So whether or not, you know, at the end of the day, we say, yeah, okay, that's a good number or not, at least we can have that conversation based on some real number, because projecting a deficit, uh, that is not within the budget already puts us in the hole, and, you know, we should, we should try to avoid that. And I don't know if it was clear, just wanted to mention that again, Andrew.
Yes, I'll definitely speak with Andy on that, and we'll, you know, in August, make sure we're on both, both those two subjects, take care of that and communicate that.
However, however you want to qualify it, if you need to show two different line items, it's, it's fine. However you need to do it for your own accounting, but we need the final tally.
Yeah. Because, you know, you have, you, I, I'm just gonna make this up, but, you know, materials, fifty dollars, personnel, hundred dollars, deficit, ten dollars. If the, whatever we put in our budget is hundred and fifty dollars, it is not really helping us, because we know that at the end of the year, it's gonna be hundred and sixty dollars, and we did not account for the ten dollars.
I understand.
But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, that's all I had, and, you know, we should clarify that thirty-nine versus nineteen number that we had, um...
The only, the only thought that I had was, you said something about, um, the after-school snacks, I think is a great idea, especially during sporting event season. I guess I'm just questioning, fifty dollars a day seems a little high to me.
Well, depends what we're offering. We're gonna try to bring in a number of different things that appeal to a wide variety of students. Uh, we'll also have some wraps and, you know, something substantial, so a student who has practiced till five o'clock can have something after school and, and will get through his sporting events, so, you know, it, it'll range from seventy-five cents to, to, um, you know, two or three dollars, depending what, what they're, um, what they're purchasing.
Yeah, because, I mean, if you think about it, it's, we're not really, it's, it's not West Street, right? I mean, the people who are playing sports are at the high school level, really, grade seven through twelve. I mean, you know, I'm sure you have kids staying after school for other activities. I just, I don't know, I guess I'm, that was my only thought. I guess I was just thinking, maybe fifty dollars might be a little generous.
That's what we're hoping for, and just based on our à la carte program, the rest are during lunch and breakfast, that if, you know, that's what we're aiming for, I think we still can, say if it's thirty dollars, I think we still can reach a break even.
Okay. That was my, you know, that was my question.
Tim already recorded the fifty dollar number, right? Just so you have fifty. Actually, I don't, I don't, I don't think I finished my thought on this one.
Actually, I don't, I don't, I don't think I finished my thought on this one. We're reducing type of green, but I'm assuming we have other greens available, since we are subject to federal regulations anyway.
Absolutely. The, the vegetable with all the meals will not, will still be following our requirements of the USDA. I'm having different colors, if you will, you know, oranges, greens, reds, to go through the day. This is just a specific entree that would just be the salads, then again, fluctuating of lettuce and other things. We'll still offer salads with, say, the pizza lunch or something else. It's just the entree that takes extra time and done at the high school that we can save money by not, not doing.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Is it possible, when you're doing this card, to have a menu of what's being put out, especially for the students with any, like, threatening or food out, you know, mild or food allergies, just so this can be brought to the attention of the school nurse here?
We, we won't have anything with traces of peanuts. It would be predominantly fruits, things that we already offer in the cafeteria, so it would have this either labeling on it where they can read and see what it is. And anything, we will have some type of a menu so students can see ahead of time.
Andrew, your figures here, are they, they going on a change in lunch prices? Because we've not acted on anything. What are you going on for price?
No, we just, we-
You're going on a-
That break even was hopefully in combination, but this is just, you know, my giving you the proposal of making those changes and depending, I haven't made anything formal as far as the lunch price.
We may even be ahead of the game with that, yes, you know, right?
Well, no, it, it was my aiming for the break even did account for lunch price increase, but it doesn't hinge on that and it's not part of any guarantee.
Okay, okay.
We need to vote on that at some point.
Yes.
Just one quick last question. Are we gonna continue to accommodate kids who have restrictions? Gluten-free, diabetic students?
Okay.
Yes, as long as the, per our policy, USDA policy, the school policy, if a parent comes with a doctor's note, engages the school nurses, they let us know, accommodate all of those.
Okay, cool.
And we'll also have vegetarian and vegan veggie burgers, other things available as we have in the past.
So now going back to the lunch price increase, when are we gonna vote for that? And I think you guys told us last time that it was really per federal regulations that we have to vote for it anyway?
Yes, as far as our recommendation was fifteen cents increase on both levels, the elementary and the high school level. What's required is a five cent increase, but rather than doing five cents every year or so, we're thinking that a fifteen cent increase, going along with, I had, but I gave you the area lunch prices of other schools. It's in the same, same ballpark as the other schools, if not exactly the same with the increase. So the requirement would be a five cent increase, but we're suggesting a fifteen cent increase.
Okay. Let me ask this quick question. Would five cent increase put us at that break even point?
Either way, it's only a few thousand dollars, so I'm hoping that we would still be able to reach it, but it would definitely help cover the cost if we did go the fifteen cent.
And when's the last time we increased?
I believe it was-
Couple of years ago.
I almost said four, but I think it was three, and we went up ten cents at that time.
I think it was last year, potentially.
Okay, so again, I just want somewhere else. When do we have to vote for the price?
Before school starts.
Right. Should we do it in August or?
If you want time to review it, I would think, or?
Okay, so let's do it in August. Is it too late for us to vote for it in August?
It, it's up to you. The sooner better, the better to let peop, uh, parents know.
Okay.
Can I ask why we have to wait until August?
Uh, I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me. You have it? So if anybody wants to review, I remember the numbers, so.
You remember the numbers?
Well, I know that it's fifteen cents and we already agreed to it.
We're gonna put the exact price.
Yeah.
We did.
So we know the exact prices. Seventy-five and three.
Yep. Yeah, okay. So if we're ready to vote, let's just get on with it.
I'll make your motion.
Second, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
You have the amount in your motion?
Oh, sorry. I made a motion to increase the lunches by fifteen cents.
So that the actual price of the lunch, that should be in here.
Elementary would be two seventy-five.
I can't remember.
Yeah, high school would be three dollars, am I correct?
Yeah.
Seven through twelve, K through six would be two seventy-five.
You want the numbers?
Seven through twelve would be three.
Yes, so it's the two seventy-five elementary, three dollars, high school for lunch, one twenty-five elementary and one thirty-five for breakfast.
And those are not changing. The breakfast prices are the same as that.
All right, so we only need to vote on lunch prices.
Yeah, so it's an increase of fifteen cents for lunch prices.
Bringing it to two seventy-five to, at elementary and three dollars a high school.
Three dollars a high school.
Okay, so that's our motion. Okay.
I'll second that motion. Again, with the figures in.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. Thank you, Deanne. Just, I know, how particular we are with the concept of voting numbers, so I just didn't want- But it makes sense, because we wanna be able to communicate to the families and all that, so that's good. That's done. Next, we have the handbook.
So the handbook is included for you. It has the updates with changes in school committee policy in red.
Yep. Did everybody get a chance to look at it? Okay. Any questions? Well, as for, is there a motion to approve the updated handbook? We need to vote, right?
Yeah, because he's gotta have it done, right?
Any questions?
We're all happy with all these? Don't make them work?
I'm sure. Yeah.
Sorry.
Good luck.
So, quick question.
I did.
There were some policies that we removed, because they made more sense in the handbook. I don't know if we did it vice versa as well, but the one request, one question was whether or not we're covering all those that need to be covered between the two, the policies and handbook. Are we?
I, to be honest, I have not looked at the handbook, so I can answer that question, but I can certainly do a quick person review.
Okay, so if there is any- So, the, the, I, yeah. Is the question clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No.
Because we did actually, hm? So what we did during the, during the policy review, it was really long. We started one section at two hundred and something pages, which was referred as longer than Dr. Hall's dissertation. We brought it to a master's thesis level, so it was hundred and something pages at the end. But our conversation was that whatever we removed, we would look at the handbook to make sure that those critical items were captured in one or the other. So we're not just letting everything go all at once. So-
So, I think Judy and I can sit and go through and make sure that that's correct.
Okay, if we can do that, that would be good.
And I did have a question on the headline piece. I was a little confused about that. Because it says, a bunch, there's a bunch of crossouts. Headline will be changing. I, I was just, I would, I want some clarification.
Okay.
It's just being taken right out, I think, Deanne, right? Because it's somewhere else on page, I don't know what page it's on, page eleven?
Eleven, yeah.
Because they've got a new program, right? I saw it somewhere else.
Yeah, there's a change of vendor.
Yeah, see, somewhere else I saw it. I don't remember where it was, but.
Are you sure that's the page?
Mm-hmm.
Age eleven, so I saw the headline taken out, crossed out.
Yeah, age eleven. Well, that's weird.
Oh, what section is it? Because you probably are looking, I'm looking at the actual.
We're in, after foreign exchange.
Okay. Principal's list. Yep, yep, okay.
So the only change is that it's not headline? It's a different company?
It's a different vendor, yes.
Since when?
We were able to get a better price.
Recently.
Yeah.
Yeah, this past year.
Did I miss that?
It was, I think Jonathan said something.
Who's part of David's budget as well.
Somehow I missed that.
That's coming through Reddicker, that piece.
Did you get that? Okay, so I'm not the only one. She missed a few.
It was a lot to absorb, that's for sure.
Okay.
These all changes going in the elementary handbook too? I know it's not as important as secondary one, but these, all these changes are going in the elementary?
Yeah, Jen and Deb worked on those.
We don't have to approve by now.
Some will not be relevant, but, yeah. So, yeah, we should, I, I, not that both of you say you didn't receive anything. I actually recall seeing that. I don't know when.
If you received it?
No, I don't know when. I don't know which account of mine, whether or not it was something I received as a parent. Would I receive it as a parent or as a school committee member?
Um, I didn't get it as a parent.
If something went on, it might have gone out to parents.
I didn't get it. I don't really get it.
Yeah, that, that, I'm, I'm questioning that.
I actually remember that.
You do remember that?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe it was part of a conversation. But it's good that you're raising it, so that means we did not all get it and we should all find out what it was.
Well, it's part of the budget presentation when David-
Maybe that's what it was.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. It's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
Okay, all right. Just, Deanne forgot to read her email, so it's-
Don't do that. Don't throw me under the bus like that.
So am I hearing you would like to postpone the vote till we confirm that the-
I would do it that way only for this reason, because we're gonna want to make this available to the public or maybe print a few copies. If there is any gap, we don't wanna really print or make it available with that gap.
Does it have to do with printing agendas, though?
It does. Yeah, my concern is, so the parts of the handbook are embedded in the agendas, so, um, those need to go out, I think, by the first of August for printing.
So another way you could do it would be to, um, do a preliminary approval, you know, subject to a final review by, um, the superintendent, let's go back to the policies, and I think we'll share all that.
Okay. Let's just do it that way. For whatever reason, I'm thinking that there is some cross-check already, like the foreign exchange, because we added that new policy. Looks like somebody looked at that and just scratched that section out, so I'm guessing it's, it's been done. But if we can double-check and make sure that that's the case, that will be great, and we can just do a conditional approval now so that we can do what we need to do before it's too late. Is that okay with everybody?
That's what I mean.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the updated junior senior, uh, high school handbook?
I'll make that motion with, with the changes for the updated high school handbook.
Yeah, with the, with the pending cross-check of the policies against the handbook.
Right, with that, of course, right. That's fine.
Okay, you made a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you again, Judy.
All's the laws.
I hear there's more?
Oh, yeah. It's coming. So speaking of that, Mr. Chairman, just so I'm clear, if the committee is meaning on fifteenth at six thirty, then the policy subcommittee would mean at five thirty.
Would mean it, five thirty, yes. Yes, thank you for asking that.
I've already done my homework, so I'm good.
Yeah. Okay, so next we have fiscal seventeen budget.
Uh, so we are continuing to build FY seventeen. We have some hiring that's going on, so we hope to have for you the finalized FY seventeen for August. There are just some moving parts still at this point.
Okay. Was there, did we hear anything as far as potential support for the SCL program and all that that was?
Uh, nothing came through, although I'm still following up with Ellen Story's office and her legislative aide for some funding. I do have some not-good news. The kindergarten grant was not funded at the state level. So for us, that's about twenty-five thousand that we will have to make up in some manner, and there's also-
Actually, it's about, about five thousand of that is for supplies that was not within the budget, because it's kind of a pass-through with the grant. Part of it was a stipend for somebody to administer the grant, so that's really the, the real net figure we have to worry about. It's about sixteen thousand dollars for salary, offset, so.
Just for general, general reference, why would we not get, what would be the reason for the state to say, we're not gonna give you a grant?
Um, it's not, no one in the state is getting it. It's eliminated.
Well, no one's getting it, okay.
It's an eliminated funding source.
Did we hear anything about, uh, nine C? Whether or not there's any cut?
Not at this point. No, no. Judy, I believe there's an adjustment to school choice, however, that's coming.
Um, there was, what came out of the conference committee, and I have not yet seen the governor's budget, but what came out of the conference committee showed a lower reimbursement rate. As a matter of fact, it was level funded for charter schools from FY sixteen. So whether or not the governor put any money in there or not remains to be seen. I, I checked it to see if the charter sheets have been updated with the final budget, may have not, so that's another looming part that we may have to be watchful of, because we built a budget based on a higher charter reimbursement number. And it was level funded on the conference committee.
So in other words, we're looking for lower reimbursement of charter students, uh, and the gov-
Which would impact-
And the governor is also campaigning for removal of the cap at the same time. No, that's good.
Wherever we land on this, you know, again, you know, he's, he's signed a budget, but I haven't seen the charter sheets. I worked, I think I worked yesterday and they're not out yet. So, again, how that impacts the end kind numbers, we'll need to be seen.
It seems as though, once all of this shakes out and we know the, the numbers, it's worth communicating that to the community.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
Because, you know, it's, it's, it was kind of obvious just through the last meetings that, um, I don't think the impact is understood. From, the impact from the state level is understood, and I think we, we need to be the ones that are communicating that.
Yeah, I think also, I, I completely agree, and also I think it's important for everyone to see real examples of how the budget has a lot of moving parts. We forecast something based on what we know at that point in time, suddenly something gets eliminated. The budget was, that was supposed to go in a certain direction, suddenly they realize they have a seven hundred and fifty million dollar deficit, deficit or gap, and then they have to make up for it somewhere else, so they reduce budget and education takes the hit most of the time, so.
Yeah, and I think the, the reality is that, um, most people don't know that, because, I mean, the only reason we know that is because we get the information.
Yeah, absolutely. You're right.
So, we are the ones that have to take the initiative and communicate that information.
Yeah, a good point, very good point. We should do that.
And in speak, yep, and speaking with Chris Martin, he is concerned about nine C cuts and the potential for that, given the revenue forecast out of the state, so he's already starting to look at the potential for- So he's already, um, starting to look at the potential for those, and, you know, I think it was three years ago that they came in May, um, which doesn't leave a lot of time to make any real significant, uh, changes, so.
Right. That's what it was. Yes.
So this information that gets communicated is not only to parents and the community, it has to be to the various departments, select board, finance committee?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because I don't think they're privy to all the information either, just, you know, on a general basis.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that we, we decided to have these broader conversations with all those stakeholders anyway.
Uh-huh.
Um, regardless of what it is, we're gonna start having these conversations sooner than later. We're gonna put all these numbers out there so that, you know, Chris, finance committee, select board, everybody understands what's happening, what is going on.
And I think in writing is good. You know, it gives people time to digest the information. We have record of communicating the information.
Absolutely. Yep, I, I hear you have a good handwriting or it doesn't.
Not me.
Okay.
I'm lefty.
All right, so, yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good idea as well. We should communicate, uh, how things are going.
We will.
Fiscal.
Yes.
All right.
We will.
Transplant.
Were we, uh, any further along the, the additional money we got for the list that was coming back, or are we able to go further into the adding more back in with the additional money we received?
Um, from your perspective, where did we leave off? So the last position we added back was the shared position, the shared elementary position, so that is back.
We stopped short of the, uh, business office.
And the business office position came back.
It came back.
They're back.
Yes.
So is anything left hanging there that was on our list? Can't remember.
That's a while ago.
Wait, I have the last, the, uh, social studies, English chair position.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
We had taken that off, we'd also moved on, an English teacher here, the English teacher came back, but, uh, shared social studies, English position did not.
Okay, so what does it mean in terms of, uh, the dollars that remain potentially if that person didn't come back? Do we have now other leftover money that can be spent for other reinstatement purposes? No?
So then everything else came back on this list, the middle school math, high school E L, ELA, elementary instrumental and choral music.
Okay.
Uh, high school admin assistant, elementary point six P E, special ed, elementary chair position and business office. The only thing that didn't is the point five social studies.
No, actually.
No, the point five social studies did.
That did, okay.
But there was that combo of social studies, E, um, English teacher, that came out earlier on in the iterations.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
And that was not one we could restore.
Okay, well, that wasn't on the final list anyway.
Okay.
Right.
What's the impact of that to, uh, courses that we were planning to offer or anything else?
Uh, so the impact at the, uh, secondary level certainly is, um, some of the elective English courses, um, and the joint ELA, social studies were the, um, A P coursework in, um.
Human geography.
Human geog- geography.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, and, uh, some of the elective offerings, uh, that the, that the, that department wanted to be able to offer.
All right, that's, that's unfortunate, but, yeah.
I think my son signed up for that one.
I think there were fifteen students at the time we were having these conversations, which is a pretty good number.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Have we lost any staff who've gone elsewhere, taken other positions or anything?
Um.
That were part of this whole coming back and based on salary and so on?
Yes. Uh, we had the, uh, P E teacher at the high school and the athletic director, uh, took a position in a, a different position out of education, actually.
Yeah, I thought I heard that.
Say that again, the athletic director?
The.
Okay.
P E teacher, um.
Yeah.
Um, off the top of my head, that's all I can recall.
Okay.
Might that give us opportunity to get more P E than the point six? Is that pending on whoever's higher?
Um, we are talking with, um, the elementary school about that, although the scheduling will be difficult, 'cause it's a point six at the elementary, so, um. It's in, it's in discussion.
Scheduling's a nightmare, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. So the next one is the school committee evaluation. We're gonna try to have something tonight, but I just wanted to, and we can't have it because of everything else that came up. Um, I just wanted to have this here so that we can, uh, verify a couple of things. One is, uh, M A S C has already an evaluation, uh, form, evaluation format.
Mm-hmm.
That, uh, I think you had put in our, one of our folders, um, I will, I can't remember right now, but I will just, uh, send everyone a note reminding which folder it is in. That's one thing we can do. The other thing that we decided to do was to do something, look, uh, take a flip chart and do something like, uh, plus delta and just have a conversation.
Mm-hmm.
The third thing that I wanted to ask is, since we have about a month between now and then, assuming we can do this in August, hopefully we can, before school starts. Um, do we want to publicize it so that, you know, folks can come in and we can have a, uh, larger, uh, visitors comments section where they can give us their feedback? We can collect it that way. I know that some other school districts actually have this, uh, open survey to the public and it's, it's pretty elaborate, but I don't know that we wanna go to that detail. It requires a lot of, uh, coordination, but we can invite people and they can come in and just provide their, provide their feedback directly to us to the extent that they would like to.
Is there a survey that already exists that can go on Survey Monkey, so it's not, you know, I, it feels to me like, you know, we can offer it up for people to show up.
Yeah.
But are people, but are people going to show up?
Do we have, do we have the subscription to Survey Monkey?
We can do it through, uh, Google Forms.
Okay.
Hmm. Without turning it into a major project, is it possible?
Yes, so Cheryl, is it, is it a lot of work to, if we do?
I don't know.
Just add it to the list.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't wanna add it to the list.
But that's what it is, exactly.
I mean, I think, you know, probably the hardest part is generating the questions so that you get some valuable feedback, and what areas are you really interested in gathering information on? Um, and once you discuss that, then the, building the front really isn't that difficult.
Why don't we look again what, what you're gonna send back to us or, and then we can, then we talk about in August, because we're gonna go with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what?
Well, wait a minute.
No, in August, we wanna do it.
Yeah, we wanna do it in August, because I don't wanna keep pushing this off and then starting the school year, because we have so much to do in the new school year.
Yeah.
Well, and if I may, um, it may be, uh, helpful to us as a new superintendent and new school committee to have, um, M A S C come and do a workshop so that we are establishing, um, a solid foundation to build from as a committee and a, and a superintendent, and that, that actually may be part of our workshop. Let's say sometime in early August, that Dorothy Presser would come and she would, you know, work with us on developing norms and establishing, uh, you know, communication protocols, things like that. So that we understand the ways that we're gonna work together best moving forward, um, and that is something that is actually open to the public. Um, and maybe an opportunity to have the public come and, and talk about particularly things that, um, are of concern for them or strengths that we have. Um, but she can lead us through, um, a workshop, yeah.
That will be mostly for us. I like the idea that that will be a good thing to do.
I'll be there. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
So maybe what we need to do going forward, again, it's, it's, it just feels like we're constantly running out of time.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So August would definitely, we'll carve out time for this.
Ideally, yes, but ideally it would be nice to do some kind of survey, so maybe next year, working towards having it more formalized and this year doing what you said.
Mm-hmm.
And doing a, you know, flip chart and have, inviting folks, maybe sending out some kind of email or something to.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yep, absolutely.
People in the school committee and.
It's a public meeting.
Yeah.
And, uh.
And if it's simple enough, we can just, you know, work on it, maybe put it out there mid-year and then, uh, check it against some end of year results. I don't know, just, you know, I don't wanna really add too much work either. I don't know that a lot of folks do surveys, but, uh, if they do, then it's, uh, you know, we have to go through the feedback. You know, the, uh, free form, uh, comments and all that, it takes a little while to go through all that sometimes.
And to your point, if, if we spend the time now developing a quality survey.
Mm-hmm.
Then it's something that you can use year after year and compare, you know, improvement or growth in certain areas.
Right. Yeah.
So that's why developing questions, I think, will take a little bit of time.
Yes.
But it's probably worth working with Dorothy Presser and saying, look, we'd like to spend some time doing this in August, and maybe it would be available to give out to, to, um, families.
Mm-hmm.
Early in, and the community, early in the school year.
Mm-hmm.
Cool, we'll do it that way. So, so that means we're gonna do our own, uh, conversational, we're gonna do the M A S C, uh, format.
Mm-hmm.
And we're gonna ask whoever is available to join us, uh, that evening, uh, and we'll go with that to start with, with the intent of, uh, putting some, uh, thank you, Judy.
So I think what we need to do is put that first on the agenda, so folks don't have to sit around and correct, you know, five agenda items. Keeping, you know, maybe a little primal, primal, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I'll put my extra skin on that.
So we're good on that one then?
Yeah.
Good. Um, we, we should prioritize that regardless of what happens for August, just we should, uh, do that and be done with that. Um, strategic plan review and alignment. Is this something that I asked for?
You have, you've asked to have that as a standing agenda item?
Okay. Sounds like it. Yes.
Um.
So my, my, um, standing question then, since you put it that way, is this, we have our strategic plan that we put together. We know that we did not really adhere to it, uh, for this fiscal year's budget, upcoming fiscal, well, actually it's current now.
Current.
Uh, fiscal seventeen budget, but beyond that, there are some items that we need to really, uh, keep an eye on to make sure that we are, whatever we're doing
Mm-hmm.
is with an eye to, uh, achieve that vision, uh, realize those items in the strategic plan. Um, I don't know how, how we're gonna do it, if we're gonna keep this as a standing item, but we can actually, uh, hold ourselves against that. I know that you, you will share your own goals and that they're gonna align with this.
Right. Mm-hmm.
I just wanna make sure that the school committee, with whatever we are contributing to, we are held to the same thing and just, we are able to explain that we are aligned with that strategic plan as well. Cause there are some items that have the school committee as the, um, we didn't call it owner, what do we call it, stakeholder?
What, uh, the column responsible?
Responsibility column, yes, so.
Responsible, yeah.
Yeah.
So we should, we should hold ourselves accountable for that as well.
So again, I think, you know, in working with, um, M A S C, developing that agenda item so that we are getting either monthly updates or bi-weekly updates and that. You know, what does that look like so that it's effective for you?
Yeah.
And so that we're communicating to the community each of those, you know, we don't have to do all four every single meeting, but, you know, we can pick whatever that looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Cool. So the last one is, I guess, reiterating what we briefly talked about last time. Because of budget concerns, we said that we did not put anything in our budget for that joint meeting, but I think Jen, you said you might be able to go?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with your schedule, are you sure you would be able to?
I'd have, just have to clear it, if it's definitely happening, then, yeah, I can clear that.
Okay.
Take it easy.
All right. So we, did we miss the, uh, early bird?
Nope, I just checked it today.
Okay.
Okay. I'll take the days off.
So if we did not, let's just then make one registration for the early bird. I don't, uh, last time, no one else raised their hands, but if there is any interest.
One?
And I think it's good to start with one. And we'll, you know, pick Jane Brains when she comes back.
It's a great conference, looking at the, um, discussions.
Yeah. Well, even the preliminary agenda had so many items that are relevant to what we are talking about and what we've been talking about, that it would be good to hear Jen come back and give us a recap of what happened, who did what.
Her PowerPoint presentation.
It's good for networking.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Cool, thank you for doing that, Jen?
Yeah.
All right. We don't have anything in upcoming business. All the communication is posted in our, um, drive. Uh, we're gonna resume, unfortunately, we did not, we did not have a, uh, policy subcommittee meeting, uh, today, uh, because of a conflict. We're gonna resume that, uh, in August. Um, I will actually, I'm flipping it, I will go to the superintendent's report at the end. I'm just trying to see if there's anything that we need to. Jen, just, how was your initial experience with the collaborative?
Yeah, so it was great. Um, I went a little early for an orientation. Um, there's three new members, um, on the board. Um, so it was really interesting, kinda learning about the kinds of things, um, that collaborative is doing. Um, they're becoming a little bit more involved in sort of the, um, I don't wanna say politics, but, um, they had a presentation from the Sabre Public Schools folks came. Um, they are traveling around to various school districts, uh, coming to school committee meetings, doing sort of informational sessions, uh, for parents, um, the caregivers, and students, and learners in the area. Um, and I thought, it was a really great quick overview as to what is Sabre Public Schools about, what's, what's their beef, right? What's going on with the whole charter schools and touching briefly on funding, um, you know, fair playing field or not, um, as to how the charter schools are funded. So it's really informative, um, and I'd, I'd love to invite them to Granby, if they're willing to come.
That's a great idea.
And I think it'd be a really great thing, uh, maybe the beginning of the school year, you know, the elect, the vote is in November, so, be plenty of time. So I brought the little folder, um, there's some items in here, and they come with all kinds of information, so parents can just stop in. It doesn't have to be a big, huge thing, but maybe, um, in September, we can invite them into a school committee meeting or a separate, you know, event.
Yeah, great idea.
Um, and let the, let folks come in and learn a little bit about what they're doing and why. So, got one?
Thank you, Jen. Um, Jim, did you wanna, uh, talk about the building committee?
Well, we've got a meeting Thursday.
Yep.
Thursday, looking forward to that, and I think they should have something back from M S B A, I think, like something, so we'll get updates. We usually don't find out much between, till we get to the meeting, at least I don't. Uh, looking forward to that, cause it's, um, after the turn of the year is getting closer to hopefully breaking ground. Hopefully still in our February launch timeframe, hopefully, so we can save some money. But hopefully we don't lose our momentum, keep them going, but it's exciting to, hopefully people watching, uh, Channel fifteen comes and it's good to see what's going on and, um, getting closer to putting the shovel on the ground.
Thank you. Cheryl.
Thank you. Um, so I wanted to take a minute to update you on, um, some of our newest hires, uh, that we've been working with, uh, over the, uh, late, uh, late spring, early summer. Like to welcome Lindsay Burns as the school psychologist, Leslie Mahoney as the structured learning center teacher, Julie Bradfield is returning as a pre-K teacher. James Noga is our board certified behavioral analyst, and Nancy Jenks as our nurse leader slash school nurse, so I'd like to welcome them. Um, I do unfortunately, uh, need to announce, uh, Principal Jennifer Champagne's, uh, leaving. Um, she will be going to, uh, Belcher Town Public Schools. I wanted to take the moment to say thank you to Jen for all of her service, uh, at East Meadow. Um, both as principal, but also as a teacher, um, sixteen years, uh, of her efforts here have truly made a difference for the children in Granby and her, and their families. So, uh, wishing her the very best, um, and in our discussions, we just sort of feel like our paths will cross again. Um, she's just a fabulous administrator and, uh, she will be missed. Uh, with that, however, I would like to say thank you publicly to the parents, um, and to the staff members who are gonna take time, uh, to interview, uh, ne- uh, this week, actually. Uh, starting on Wednesday, we will have an organizational meeting, uh, of the committee, of the hiring committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we will also be conducting interviews on Wednesday, Thursday, and potentially Friday. So we're moving forward, uh, with the search. Um, we do have a very full, uh, applicant pool, so we are very attractive, uh, which is good to see.
That's good.
Um, so I'm excited to meet the candidates and, and work with the committee. Um, let's see, um.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
It doesn't change our, um, one principal for elementary school approach, right, okay.
No, correct. Uh, so the hire is obviously a, a very important hire, uh, because it is a unique situation, although Western math, smaller districts, um, do have often principals in multiple schools. Um, but that does require, I think, a certain skill set, um, so we are cognizant of that, um, as we make a hire. Talked about budget already, um, I think that's it for me. Oh, um, I went to the M A S S, uh, conference, um, Dr. Hu was there as well, um, uh, wonderful conference.
Um, I will be coming forward in August, hopefully August, uh, with, uh, potentially, uh, an entry plan. Um, I also participated in the new superintendent induction program, uh, and learned quite an awful lot about, um, entry, which, um, is probably after June first, I probably should have done that before. Um, so we're gonna back the bus up a little bit and, um, I'll get you an entry plan and, um, so we can work together on measuring, uh, the impact that we have, um, in the schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have an executive session.
Yes, we do.
Um, so we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Lodge after thirty A, section twenty-one, part A three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will return to open session.
We will?
Is, yes, we will.
I thought it said we won't.
We will return.
'Cause it's the first one.
Oh.
Yes, we will have an announcement.
Hmm.
Um, we may have an announcement. Uh, so, can we please have a roll call?
Deanne Payne-Ratowski, aye.
Jennifer Curran, aye?
Jennifer's aye.
Emery Arven, aye. So is there, well, we did the motion to adjourn, so we did the roll call.
I think not.
Oh, you mean the open session? Yeah, we're back into open session, um, we do not have any votes to announce or any other announcements to make at this time.
Yeah. Which kind of like you would have.
So with that, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second?
We've got it.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.